And fundamentals for the beginners. Basically, this about is a kind of programming language which is extension to the Oracle SQL part. Okay, so, so before learning this topic and all, so everyone should be able to, uh, would have been practiced or known on the Oracle fundamentals, how the Oracle fundamentals, how the data gets stored and what are the different types of database objects. And so because these are frequently used in the program, programming language. So let us start on this one, so it's a prerequisites like, so we need to have a Oracle software version, any of these versions installed in your system. And the work, so everyone should be aware of this Oracle fundamentals and Oracle fundamentals, SQL fundamentals and scripting, scripting Oracle, right, how to write queries and all. So how to join the multiple tables, these are things which are, should be known, everyone should be known before learning this topic, okay. So before, without learning, without understanding the Oracle fundamentals and Oracle SQL part, so this will be very difficult to understand this, okay, okay. So, and one more thing is Oracle database connecting tools, we should have either of these tools. So once you install this software, so it will have Oracle SQL plus or from the command props, also you should be able to connect database and also here the SQL developer. So you don't, you don't have, should have this one, okay. The tools along with this for writing programs, we need to have installed Notepad plus plus. Notepad plus plus is the tool, how it looks like is, I will tell you, I will show you that. So this is the one here, now you guys are seeing this tool, right, Notepad plus plus, see here. So this is a tool where you can write your programs like this way. So this is the way how you can write the programs, okay. So for this code and all, the writing a PL SQL, so they should, you can see here, some of them letters and blue color, some of them in black. So how this programming language will be identified, the syntax and all, so you can go to this, once you install this Notepad plus plus, so go to the languages, software language and click on yes, yes. Here you can see the SQL plot, SQL. So if you click on this, then automatically the whatever syntax or programs you are write, you write, so it will flag into blue, blue and black. So blue indicates those are given by the Oracle keywords, okay. So these are the keywords which are flagged here, okay. So this is the thing which you need to have it before doing it, okay. So let us go back to this presentation, okay. Okay, fine then. So this topic, the main PL SQL contains below these topics. So we'll, we'll start on the PL SQL introduction and what are the introduction has multiple topics like what is the difference between SQL and PL SQL. So what is a PL SQL, why we need a PL SQL programming, okay. So under the today topic, we will cover for one hour session till nine o'clock, nine fifteen, fifteen last fifteen minutes, we'll give our question answers. If you have any question answers, you can get back to me so that I can clarify your doubts, okay. Then today's session, we will discuss about PL SQL introduction and PL SQL variable data types and block types, okay. So find them, so these are the total number of topics which are available in this, in this topic, okay. So what is a PL SQL? So PL SQL is a programming language. So in introduction part, so what you will discuss about what is PL SQL and its characteristics and the Oracle SQL versus the PL SQL, what is the difference between these two and the PL SQL architecture and advantages of PL SQL, okay. So let us start on the first, so what is a PL SQL? PL SQL is a kind of programming language and which is an extension to this Oracle SQL part, that is a sequential query language. PL stands for procedural language, procedural language for, which is extension of the sequential query language, okay. It's an Oracle proprietary language, so it's a Oracle proprietary language. So we cannot write a PL SQL programs in any of the other products like other, other databases like Microsoft SQL, SQL Server, so this will not support. So this is owned by the Oracle. So how to, if you want to write a programs, we don't need to separately install a PL SQL. We don't need that, so it comes along with the software. So once you download the software, Oracle 10G or 11G or 12C, so these things, once you install it, it will comes along with this. So how to know whether, if you want to see that, I will show you how it looks like. So let us connect the database. Here my, in my computer, I have installed Oracle 12C and so the PL SQL version, it shows that how, what is the version of the current version of the PL SQL. So that is already installed in the database, okay. Let us connect this one. So can connect here. See, if you want to see the what type of version is available on database here, so I installed Oracle 12C. There is a data transactionary view which is already present, once you along with, comes along with us of installation. We dollar version, so you can note down the notes. So if we want to see the version of the database, you can see this, see here. Oracle database version 12C enterprise version. Release 12 point 1 point 0 version, this is a 60 bit production, okay, 60 bit processor, okay. And here you can see this PL SQL version 12 point 1 point 0. So it comes on same, the same version, so the PL SQL version is also available now, okay. Along with these two, these are the things which are available, it comes along with the software, okay. So this is the way how you can see this. Let us go back and, okay. So now you can see that how, how this version presents, okay. So it comes, comes along the, along with the Oracle version, okay. It includes the procedural statements and which is a mandatory and SQL statements are optional. So these SQL statements are optional, even without writing an SQL statements, we can write a programming language, so that is, I'll show you the couple of things like in programs, so how it looks like, what is the meaning of this one, okay. And here, the database manipulation capabilities of SQL are combined along with the procedural statements. So it has, this is about this one and it provides like a conditional statements. What is a procedural statements? So procedural statements contains the conditional statements, loops and branching and the writing a multiple programs which is inside that, so this, this are, this program supports this. PL SQL is also a, PL SQL is written in the form of a block types, so which is a sequential of statements. Sequential of statements, it looks good, okay. So here the features are, so let me, let me, before going to the slide, I will go to this, this slide, okay. See here, here there are, I drawn the picture of multiple databases. So Oracle, so Oracle is also one of the databases available in the current market. Along with this, we have IBM DB2, so IBM product which is IBM thing. So they have developed the separate database for this and also this Microsoft, Microsoft also has developed SQL Server. Which is of, for installation, to install the database. So we need to have SQL Server software to be installed on the system, okay. So all these three, if you see the databases are different types, are different, different companies, different entities has developed their own databases to store the data. Main purposes to store the data and to retrieve the data from the database. So whatever the applications we develop in the current applications, like, like example banking, insurance, any kind of sector, if you say the, take this, so these sectors, so we have a bulk of data. So let us take a bank example, so banks also you see number of transactions per day will happen per day, right? So how to, these things and all, what are the transactions we activities, we do daily basis. So we need to have a kind of space, storage space where we can store the data in the database. So for storing the data also, we need to have a kind of programming language that is SQL part. So this SQL is common across all programs. They, in the name, SQL means sequential query language is common across all different entities, stories, okay. So they have their, but the syntax may vary from different versions. They have their own scripting formula and the syntax, they provide that SQL Server will have a separate called T SQL, T SQL, they call it a separate with a different name, but overall, so these are the activities they generally perform. So here, let us take Oracle now here. So DDL, if you want to store the data, so we need to create an object, objects in the sense like a DB object, like a table, tables views, middle, middleized view and all other things, all the different types of database objects are present here. For that, so we need to create a space to store the data, like example, like employee table. So if we take a company, so company has a list of employees. For storing this employee details separately, we need to have a, we need to create an object like a table. So let us take a table. So this one thing, so these are the regular operations they generally perform like DDL, create, drop, alter, drop in the sense of dropping an object, I think you already know about these topics in the Oracle SQL part, okay. So these are the regular things you generally perform like DML operations, DDL operations and TCL. Commit and rollback and save point etcetera, okay. So these are things are performed here. So whatever the logic like business rules like bank and all, so these data gets stored using this SQL query language to store the data, okay. So that is fine up to here, okay. If you want to do a kind of many operations, mathematical calculations like examples, like in say, in say, let us take the same example banking, so there will be interest, daily interest or monthly interest will be applied, calculated or quarterly interest will be applied for any accounts. Say, let us say example loans, so if you took, take any housing loan, so monthly that EMA will be calculated and it will be deposit, credited, debited from your account, okay. So if you, if you open any deposit, so even for deposits also will have separate interest, right? Interest exam, the monthly interest will be calculated and it will be credited to your account. So these kind of regular business operations, each, each account type like loans, deposits, savings, current account etcetera, all these things will have separate business rules for each and every account type. So in that scenario, so these SQL queries, we can write everything in a one SQL query. So but the problem is if you want to process record by record and everything cannot, cannot be included, it will not be permitted to the SQL part. So we need to have a kind of the programming language like if you want to process record by record or if you want to apply business rules like interest calculations and all, so this cannot be, this can also be done in SQL query itself, but the problem is everything will be in one SQL. So if you, if you have everything in one SQL, see, imagine the size of the SQL query may increase. So due to that, the performance, the performance data retrieval and calculations, it takes, it gets degraded and the, the performance of each and everything will be reduced, like and even the size of the SQL query may, will definitely increase. So due to this, there will be a low performance and also like, one more thing is, if he, if there are any enhancements like exam, has implemented in India and due to this, because of this name, because of this, so there is a cash limit of 24,000 rupees, we can withdraw in a week. So that conditions and all, so it has been, it should be implemented within the bank. So these conditions, if you want to do it, so it is difficult to change the single SQL query. If you can change it, but it gets impacted with other existing conditions which is applied already written in the SQL part. Due to this, so we need to test all the scenarios, whatever the possible scenarios, whatever we have written already in the SQL part, so it is very difficult to do that. So due to this reason, so PL SQL has, there is an importance to overcome this kind of problems. Like if you change a single SQL query, it, other scenarios gets impacted. Due to this, so we need to have a separate programming language, so that is the purpose of it. If you write the programs and business rules in the kind of multiple blocks, like multiple chunks. So if you divide that business rules into multiple modules, so and if each module is written separate block or different statements, procedural statements, then it is easy, right? So I see Sheetal, thanks for joining, Sheetal. So Sheetal, you are you, are you new to this PL SQL? I see couple of people also joining. Okay, it looks like, okay, Sheetal, so we have started on the PL SQL part. So I completed, I just started one or two slides now. So I'm just sharing why we need a PL SQL, what is a PL SQL, so what are the things available in the PL SQL? It's important, okay. So I just shared, so are you, Sheetal, just let you do, let, can you introduce yourself please? Sheetal, are you there? Okay, am I audible? Hi, hi Sheetal, good morning. Okay, so are you new to PL SQL or do you have any real time experience already? You worked in IT industry before? Okay, Sheetal is completely new to this topics, okay. Fine, Sheetal, so don't worry about that, I will teach these things and all, okay. Okay, so we will discuss separately in the last, what are the questions if you have it. So just park it out some, for some time now. So once I complete this session, so last, I'll end of the session fifteen minutes, I'll give a time for you guys, so where you can ask your doubts, okay. Okay, thank you, so we'll go back to the subject again, okay. So this SQL part and all, so it is difficult to write into a multi, single code, okay. So if you want to do this, if they break, if you break the business rules into multiple modules, say example like demonetization, demonetization has implemented many, many rules on the savings account, current account and other accounts, okay. So if you see this, so these mod, these rules and are, if you divide that into multiple conditions and, and the multiple modules, each module will be having a separate program written and these things, okay. So let us take an example savings account. Savings account for every weekly withdrawal limit is 24,000 rupees. So these conditions are applied for each and every account irrespective of anything, okay. So let, I just took an example of that, it can be any kind of business rule if you see this, okay. Because of this one here, the PL SQL, if you write this everything in one single program, so and the conditions they did with using the, we need to retrieve the data from the database and fetch the each and all, every account and apply a business rule on this. So if you see this for each and every account, it start of, for every week, if you calculate the average week, how much amount it has been withdrawn from the account, if you calculate and if it is exceeding beyond 24,000 rupees, these conditions will be applied, so he cannot withdraw more than 24,000 rupees. So these conditions and all, for writing this, you need to apply some conditions look like, if the, if the sum of the amount per week, if it is exceeding beyond 24,000. So these things and all cannot be written in a single program in a SQL, SQL query. If we have this entire programming statements like if else conditions looping each and every account in the loop, in the loop, looping each and every account, so we can write handle in the PL SQL, okay. So this is proprietary to Oracle, so PL SQL cannot be used in the DB2 and SQL Server. It has its own programming language, okay, so that is my SQL, SQL T SQL and all, okay. So this is proprietary to only to Oracle. So, so this is very important, like if you have the program, same program requirement, we can write in SQL, SQL query, single SQL query and if you, if we, if you same thing, if it is written in a PL SQL, so the performance will be definitely improved. If you write this and then we cannot, even we can control the impact analysis also. If you change any small enhancement, if any additions added to this one, definitely, so we can control and it will not be impacted other scenarios, okay. So this, that's the reason we need, that is the importance of this PL SQL, okay. So let us go back to the next slide and all, I will explain more in detail also. This is also practical scenario where you can see this. If you understand this picture, so definitely, so we, for this, we don't need to know about the programming. So this is just a real time scenario, see, let us take a bank. If you know, if you go to visit any bank, so just ask anyone, you know, anyone of your, the bank employees, like the bank employees, they will see, they will tell me that, tell us that what software, if you ask any question on the software, like so which is the software which you are using now in the, in the bank, they'll say that there is a separate software name, I forgot by chance now, okay. That is, I forgot the name, oh, I'm, I'm not able to recall it now, I'll tell once I started this, okay. So let us take the bank, so same thing, it's a, we need to have a front end application like, it's a front end application which is written in Java, let us, Java and here. So all the business rules applied on the savings account, we have different type of accounts like savings, current loans and personal loan, housing loan, mortgage loan, deposits etcetera, Forex. So these are the many modules we have, okay. So in these modules, so if the same, each module like savings and all, it has, it has its own business rules applied. So savings account is not equal to current account and it is not equal to loan account. It has its own business rules. Suppose if the same logic or business rules are written in Java language, so for Java language, we need to have along with one additional programming that is called SQL part. It's a sequential query language to retrieve the data, to store the data, to manipulate the data. So we already discussed in the previous slide, so these are the regular operations like DDL, DML and TCL. These are things which you should be knowing well in advance, so before learning this, okay. If the same logic it is written, business rules are written in Java and to retrieve the data, to manipulate the data, we need to have a connection between the database. Data gets stored in the Oracle part and we, if you have same application, business rules are written in Java. For fetching the data, it has to connect the database using JDBC connection or ODBC connection and here. So we need to, this SQL queries will be used to get the data, retrieve the data and to manipulate the data. These things and also to control the data like to save the data or not, if you want to rollback or if you don't want to do, save the data, so we don't need this, okay. So we can do this in the SQL part. So these things and all, if every time like example, you go to bank and you withdraw, withdraw a 2,000 rupees example from your account, so there should, there will be a program here which is written here and go back to your, once you enter your account number, it gets back, go back to the database, fetch the account details of your account and it will deduct 2,000 rupees from your account and it will show the remaining balance in the screen, okay. So for this one, so, so every time it has to connect and get back to the data, back to the front end application. So this is written in Java, so for connecting here, so we need a database connection like the, using the JDBC or ODBC, if you are familiar with this Java and all, so they use utility to connect database. We can directly connect from the front end application to database. So there should be a kind of connecting path, so there should be a kind of roadmap to connect the front end application and the backend, okay. So this one here, every time like if you read same application, it is written in Java, all the business rules, imagine how many connections will happen per day, so how many users go bank, go back to the bank and withdraw or it can be a withdrawal or cash deposit, so how many deposits will happen, how many loan transaction will happen, how many savings accounts, transactions will happen like credit and debit and like similarly like current account. So there will be a huge network traffic between the front end application and between the front end and also the backend, that is database here. So due to this, right, to overcome this one here, so there will be a huge traffic and also the application performance also will get reduced, because every time it has to connect for each transaction, for each transaction, it has to connect back to database and get the data and do, they can do the operations like credit or debit here. So if the same application which is written, the business rules are written in Java, right? If the same business rules which are written in Java, if you convert or migrate the same business rules so within the programming language which is given by this Oracle and in the form of PL SQL. So the data will be here, the programming business rules will also be here. Imagine the, so the, the performance of this programming, the business rules will be much faster if you write the business rules, everything here within this three, within this database. So that is a reason of, that is importance of the PL SQL program. And there will be only one, for each transaction, there will be only one operation will happen, that is sending an input to this one, do the calculations, withdrawals, everything here, apply interest rules, example, everything and deposits, calculate the interest, everything within the database and send back the output to the front end application. So in this case, the front end applications will be in a thin layer and the thick layer will be the database. Because how many operations will happen, so applying business rules one is one thing, data manipulation is also one more thing and sending back the, as a package, everything, sending back the response, whatever the response you do daily basis, that will send back to the front end application. So front end will be acting as a, like a passenger, like sending back again, sending input, send or not input and get me the output, simple thing. So there will be only two transactions will be there for each transaction, like example cash deposit or cash deposit, so it will send that amount of cash which you are going to deposit, what is the account number and it will go back, these details will be sent to the database. So here the programming language, this is PL SQL, it reads the account number. So here, the programming language, this is PL SQL, it reads the account number and the balance which you deposit, what is the uh deposited amount, uh whether it is a debit or credit, it will go back to this one. And it will update that your account balance here and it sends back to saying that message. So our contact, account deposit is successful, deposit of this amount, two thousand rupees is successful. It sends a message back to this is front end applications. So that is, this is the way of, that is importance of this PL SQL. Once you understand this picture, so then you can see that importance here. Okay, fine, go back and if you see this one, imagine not only writing a code in the programming in the PL SQL, it also improves the performance of each and every application, it improves the performance, not only performance, scalability like. So if there are any enhancements, future enhancements, uh future enhancements like uh that are added in the application, like example recently demonetization is applied for any all account, right? So these things and all, so can be easily handled in this programming language, okay? So in this one here, without changing any front end application, so these rules will be applied in this within the programming language. So these enhancements can be easily added to this programming language, okay? I will tell you how the, how to write the programs in the later sessions for timing, understand this picture. If you understand this picture clearly, definitely, so you will see the importance of this PL SQL. In a big, in a big picture, okay, fine, great, uh okay, so so far, do you have any questions now? Anyone, please? Okay. Okay, fine, I will go back to this one, okay, the previous slides. Okay, so these are the features that are available on, because of this programming language. It delivers high performance by excluding SQL statements in a bulk rather than individual. So that will, if you call individually, it will head, it will cause a overhead on the programming and it causes a network traffic. Okay, as you see that, as you already saw that, uh in the previous slide, okay? So okay, here, and the creation of mult complex business rules can be written in a single programming unit, thus promoting uh the performance and also the productivity also gets improved, okay? Fine, uh that is fine here, okay? So, see, you can see here the color. And also portability, PL SQL code is is written in a, uh it can be written in a single operating, operating system. Can be migrated successfully to other operating system where the Oracle is running, okay? So it doesn't depend, basically the meaning of this one is portability mean, so it doesn't depend on any operating system. Because it is, these programs are written within the Oracle, not outside Oracle, like in a, on a operating system. It is written within the program, whatever the programs you, you write the programs, so that will be permanently stored in the database itself. So which will, will not depend on operating system, okay, so that is importance of this one. So which uh programs depends on operating system, so which, can you name anyone, uh the programming languages which are written in operating system? Uh you know shell scripting, heard about it, so shell scripting will be depend on uh operating system, so. So which is written in any, any expand form, okay, operating system, fine. So let us go back to this one, it supports high security, definitely, high security like within, with the help of encryption and decryption logic which are available in the PL SQL, okay? So that is also there, interaction, interact, interacting with other programming languages. So if you see this here, interacting with other programming language like Java, we can write Java language within the PL SQL, so that those are called programming, Java stored procedures. So that are permanently stored in the database. I will tell you what, how, how the programs will store in the database in the later sessions, okay? For timing, just understand this one, importance of it. The applications which are written in PL SQL are portal on any platforming and any platform. So in any platform, that is any operating system, it can return anything on, which is supporting Oracle, okay? The content switching overhead can be avoided by using advanced PL SQL concepts like bulk, collect and for all. So these are the features which are available uh in the PL SQL. So for timing, you will not understand this, what is this one bulk collect and for all. Then basically these features are available means, suppose if you want to load the data which is in a bulk. If the data gets in a bulk, if you want to store permanently at one shot, one, at one, at one time, like storing. Then, so we use these features called bulk, bulk collector is one of the features which are available in PL SQL. I will tell you what is, how it looks like and all in the, when we start on the programs, okay? For all means, for all the records, uh directly like storing, how we are storing the data in bulk. So for, for fetching the data from the uh database as a, as a, as an entire thing as a one at one shot, so we use for all, okay? Okay, fine then, so that is the meaning of it, the perform, object oriented, it also performs object oriented programming concepts like over, overloading, so we have function overloading concept. So and also you know the meaning of object oriented language. Object oriented means, there is a difference between uh sequential programming language and and object oriented programming, calling one program by one or another and you know the uh encapsulations, the features which are in program, object oriented language, Java is also, Java is Java. C plus plus, PL SQL is also an object oriented language, so which is a sequential language. You already know about this, what is C language, C programming, so that is a sequential language. Language which is excluded statement by statement, line by line in a sequential order, so that is a sequential programming language. It was some, the meaning of the object oriented language means, so along with the sequential, if you want to e- execute, so if we want to call other programs, so that is possible in the object oriented language, that is, so there is multitasking tasks and multitasking, multi threading uh features like encapsulation, so these features are uh available in the object oriented language, okay? So these features also can be implemented and will be, this program also will support this object oriented programming, okay? Function loading, overloading means, I will tell you what is the meaning of overloading. Overloading is also one of the concepts uh available in object oriented, okay? So that is, that is of it, okay? So that, those are the features of Oracle PL SQL part, so I've given a slide here and with this example so that you can understand what is the meaning of it, okay? So how it, uh how the, what is the architecture of the PL SQL? If you see here, so this one, so PL SQL contains the block of procedural statements. And also along with a SQL, SQL is an, this is an optional one. So but the mandatory one is the procedural statements, without the procedural statements, we cannot write a PL SQL block, I will tell you, I will, when I start on this, uh how many block types are there available? So what is the meaning of block mean? So for timing, just understand this architecture now, so suppose if it contains the sequel statements along with the procedural statements, so the PL SQL engine will, uh so if we write a program in the along procedural statements along with SQL statements, so I will show you a couple of programs how it looks likes. So for timing, just understand this one, it separates the procedural statements separately and an SQL statement separately. So procedural statements will be kept aside in the executor statement, there is a separate memory which is available in the engine, PL SQL engine, it separates here and here, SQL statements will be separated here. So there is an SQL engine is also available now here, uh so that will go back to the so SQL engine will find out the path in the database, so there is a kind of, that is called an execution block, execution path. So this path, based on this path, it, it, it's, it's, it ignites that statement. And whatever the operations which is written in DML operate, can be DML operations or DDL operations or TCL operations. So it go back to the database, connect the database and do the perform, whatever the action which is written in the SQL statement. So that will be performed, once it is performed, like example, let us take, getting, getting an account, savings account details from here. It go back to that database, fetch the data like savings accounts and it get backs to the a PL SQL engine and here, and what are the statements which are written here, if else conditions looping and each new this, what are the statements which is written here, like conditions, like example, interest calculation. So these interest calculations will be applied on the data which is written by the SQL one, okay? So this is how it operates inside this, uh, in, inside the database, okay? So this engine, SQL engine and the PL SQL engine will be sitting inside the database and they do these operations. So which we cannot be known, so inside this backend part, so these are the operations will perform, okay? So that is the meaning of it, okay, fine, uh here, uh up to here, I, I think everyone have understood what is the meaning of uh, uh the PL SQL and why we need a PL SQL. So this, this completes introduction of the PL SQL part, okay? So now we will discuss on the questions, okay, fine. So guys, anyone have a question so far now?